Depp, anything else on old business?
I have them for new business.
New business, we have the presentation by the Commissioner of Frankfurt Youth Football League. Please come forward and give your name for the record, please.
And if I may, Mayor Proten, I'd like to just make a couple of comments about the FYFL. I have known Chris and Debbie for quite some time, and they're two wonderful people who give a lot to their community, and we owe them all a debt of gratitude for that. But I wanted to comment that a couple of weeks ago, I went to their opening, their kickoff event at Capital View Park, and was very impressed by the amount of people there, and all the parents and kids there. There is a lot of people who are involved in this league, and it plays a very important role on a lot of children and their development here in this community, and it also makes them invested in this community. So I'm just very pleased that Frankfurt has such a great league like the FYFL, and we should all be honored.
Thank you. My name is Chris Mitchell. I am the Commissioner of FYFL, and I appreciate the lease that we have with the city. We lease Harret Field at Capital View Park, but we're running into what I call a good thing, you all might call a bad thing. We're running out of room. We serve approximately 450 to 490 kids. Commissioner Turner come down to the kickoff a couple of weeks ago. I don't know how long it took you to get into the park, but we were probably running on about a 45 minute to an hour delay, waiting for people to get off the connector, both ways to get into the park. It's such a big, we've grown that big. We started out leasing Harret Field. We were supposed to have two fields in the beginning. Our lease was $2,500 with the city. We found out a couple of years ago, our lease should have only been $1,250 because we were only getting used to one field. So now, I need to see you all, every time I call and ask a question, I've got to go to Mayor Graham. I called about Kirby's for trash pickup, you've got to go through Mayor Graham. I called for recycling stuff at the landfill, you've got to go through Mayor Graham, because everything is city-run, or that's what I've been told, so that's basically why I'm here. I'm asking you all for help. I mean, we keep our costs at a minimum. We run on a shoestring budget to try to keep it cost-effective for the parents that can't... We don't go, we don't have kids that we turn away because of lack of being able to play. We get out, we do fundraisers, we bite the bullet on some of them, some of them we pay for, I pay for them out of my own pocket. So in order to help us stay in and keep a track on everything, I mean, you know, we would like to see about getting a fence put up around our property to help maintain people coming in and out, or maybe look at moving the soccer field behind our field to Lake view Park where the rest of the soccer fields are anyway. That would give us use of two football fields at one time to get in, generate one day instead of two. We run Saturday from 8:00 this past Saturday morning till roughly 5:30, 6:00, and Sunday we were back at it at 1:00, and we were at it till 6:00 or 7:00. So it's taken that many times to run that many games. So, and it's starting to cause a problem with the soccer parents, because we're stopping them coming in, they're getting upset, they have no parking places, they're having to park down at the softball fields, walk up because we start so early, and they're only playing a couple of games a day anyway from, on this past weekend. So I mean, I appreciate being able to play there, but I guess what I'm here to do for a while, I'm looking for more. See if the city can help us put on something that I think the city, it'll help the city in Frankfurt in the long run. We've gone to Owensboro in the past, two tournaments down there, 18, 20 teams, they get it done in a weekend. There's no reason why Frankfurt can't have that here, but I can't do that without the use of more facilities and the high schools here. Sometimes they're good about that, but we lose revenue that way, and we can't afford to lose any revenue. So I guess what I'm asking for is, by helping us find us a new field there at Capital View Park. It serves our purpose, we're just, we're outgrowing it, which is a good thing. You know, Mike Hocksmith, I have no problem, I mean, he calls me, I call him, we, whatever we need, it's a good working relationship. I really had no problem with the Parks Board, other than, you know, getting stuff approved, they tell me that I've got to come here, so instead of talking with them from now on, I'm just going to come and see what you all say. The fence that I've, is talked about first, you know, that's going to help us, it's not going to be a foolproof thing, it'll help us clear up some health issues. We probably spend about an hour every morning picking up deer PCs off the field, so the kids do not play in it. I know a fence is not going to help that, but it's going to help deter some of it maybe. There's just things that we would like to do that we can't afford to do running on a shoestring budget that I'm asking for help from the city of Frankfurt. And it's basically why I'm here.
Could we, I'm pretty open to considering this, but could we hear from, could we hear from one of our Parks Directors as to what the, take it, and what the practical effects would be for us?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. As you all know, down at Capital View, all three of the fields in the back, when Bill was mayor, that's when we built Capital View Phase III, and they all are conducive to fall sports. We have two fields, the Soccer Alliance fields for the high schools, two fields for the Select Soccer, which is YM, the YMCA, and he is right. When the concept was put on the drawing board, there were two football fields, a regulation football field and a smaller football field, but we ended up being landlocked down by where the power lines are and where there's a big ravine in the back, so that's why there became one football field. And I know that they all play in the fall, and on Saturday when Select Soccer's playing, and now that football has grown like that, there is one heck of a crowd down there, and we've, we really need additional parking if we can find a way to do it. And we did strike the parking lots this year and got that done. And I think you're, in talking, what you said like that maybe Mike Hocksmith said that you've got to have Mayor Graham's approval on stuff, or the Commission, I think maybe like getting funds to build a new field, or doing lights, or something like that, we would have to have the Commission's approval, you know, monetarily and all that. But we'd be willing to sit down and see if we can work out something with, I think it's going to take the Soccer Alliance, I mean, the Soccer, Select Soccer and football, and see if we can work out some type of deal. I know Saturday's a big day, and normally there's nothing going on on Sunday, correct?
Well, we had to start playing this year because we added Lawrenceburg, Lawrenceburg actually joined the Frankfurt Football League.
Well, I'd heard, how many participants did Anderson County bring up?
They're bringing, it's AV and Piggy's squad, that's roughly, probably about 50 kids plus the parents.
Okay.
We're just growing, I mean, our numbers are about 450 to 490, right?
Yeah, I know you've been growing every year, and it has become a predominantly a Saturday problem, correct?
Okay, it's a Saturday now, Sunday problem. I mean, it's not only that, I mean, the restrooms down there, we're trying to share, we got the only operating restroom down there, so we're trying to split, so that's why I get everything up there. Parking's horrible. If I had an accident down there, we are not going to be able to get an emergency vehicle in down there, when parking is even after lives were strung. We tried to take care of that this weekend, and it never, we couldn't get anywhere. I called the non-emergency number to dispatch, they said there was really nothing they could do about it. They sent somebody out there, and they said there was really nothing they could do about it, you know. So I don't know where our legality stands, I mean, is that if I can call a tow truck to get those cars out of there because they're causing a hazard? You know, I've got an ice cream man blocking traffic because the city of Frankfurt gets an permit to sell ice cream, but he's blocking my traffic getting through, and I mean, I can't, I've got traffic backed up all the way around the park because he's setting his own his ice cream. And, you know, we're trying to do the best we can, you know, and I appreciate everything we do there, but we're growing leaps and bounds, and I mean, it's only going to get better. I foresee maybe the additional, maybe three teams in Lawrenceburg next year, because Lawrenceburg does not offer football to the Piggy Division. They have nothing like that there, that's one reason why we reached out to Lawrenceburg. They are paying a fee to Frankfurt, but Lawrenceburg makes no money off that. We're actually not making any money off that, but it's a service we're providing to the kids. And I'm hoping that it keeps all these kids out of trouble on Saturday and three nights through the week, and we're going to see a decline in, in the youth of Frankfurt getting in trouble. That's what I want. I'd like to think that I do make a difference, as does the rest of the board that are here and have a rough patch in the swing. It's just something that, you know, I wanted to look at, and thought it was like, we're just going to get bigger, that's going to get bigger and bigger.
And it's really become an issue this year, hasn't it?
Yes.
As the years have progressed, it handled it fine, you know, and then, like you said, as the league's grown and grown and grown, you know, there's only so much parking at Capital View and one football field, but we'd be willing to sit down and talk with them and the Select Soccer, and see if we can't coordinate something or work out something with them, you know. And like I said, they just started Saturday, so this has just become a, just kind of the first Saturday.
Is that good enough for now?
I'm also with the FYFL, my name's Jeff Zhang. Along with what Chris said, we do appreciate everything. My name is Jeff Zhang with the FYFL. We do appreciate everything we get from the city down there. One of the really, the biggest issues with Capital View Park, I love the facilities, but if they're all used at once, there's just not enough parking. And it's really doesn't matter what you have going on down there, each field, if everybody's, you know, if just a soccer game's going, a football game's going, just the concept of the parking doesn't suffice with the facilities. Scheduling could be something that we could do, maybe with lights, or soccer could do with lights, and you could alleviate scheduling issues that way. Really, my thought is, the biggest issue is having to do everything in daylight hours down there with all the people that want to actually make, you know, really enjoy the park and make use of it, you know, but do appreciate having it. It just doesn't work out for all the people who do want to enjoy it, and that's really my comment on. Thank you, sir.
That's a great point.
Commissioner May won't say something.
I think if Mr. Parrish is going to go back, you're talking with the Parks Advisory Board, or just internal staff, and that seems like it would probably be the easiest way to work out schedules, because the Advisory Board sets...
Well, as it goes right now, Commissioner, they predominantly do their own schedules. The three agencies that are down there, the Soccer Alliance, who are the high schools on sire one, sire two, and then the YMCA on select one and select two, the four soccer, the other two soccer fields, I mean, and then they have the football field, and they do their scheduling, but I think it sounds like it's predominantly the YMCA soccer, correct?
But it's called, it's, I have the biggest issue with us being there, so, I mean, we got to start so early in the morning to get through the bulldog. We can't play at 8:00. I'm sure soccer, the soccer can't play at 8:00 either, I mean, that's just something that's... So with the hours and the amount of things that we have, we start at 8:00 in the morning, and we run straight through it.
Right.
And we come back and try to dig up some stuff and finish up the weekend. So I mean, it's, you know, if I get there at 8:00 in the morning, then the soccer parents are the ones who are upset because I've got the majority of the parking.
Right.
They're parking at the softball fields, walking up, and they're not real happy with you when you're trying to say, all right, are you going to football or soccer? If you're going to football, it's $2, if you're going to soccer, it's $4. So I mean, so therefore, there goes, what shoestring budget we're already running on, they're going to say soccer because it doesn't cost them. So it kind of, it kind of puts a cramp on what we're trying to do, and I mean, you know, we, we're not profitable organization, so I mean, we do run on a shoestring budget, we try to make up a discount.
Well, after what was observed last weekend, being the opening weekend for the league, they are having growing pains with, you know, with the facility and parking and all that, and it's something that we addressed, talked about this week, and I know you talked to Mike Hocksmith, our athletic coordinator, and we've got to try to sit down and work out something, but this has just really kind of come about this week.
Mayor, I was going to say further, when the first fields were built, there were two fields, as was discussed, and as Mr. Parrish said, there was a little bit of issue on space trying to get them in the back part, but it was the Football League that actually decided not to do this.
Wow.
I was just telling you that, so it was just, actually the Football League that decided they didn't want to do the two fields, because they felt like it was going to be cramped, they thought they would just put all their efforts into the one field and try to make it extra nice. And then, at the time, it was even talked about that people were saying that football was on the, like, way down, so this is good to see that after 10 years, it's gone way beyond what anybody thought, because these were the first youth football fields in the whole community dedicated just to youth football. Prior to that, my kids played on...
Brothers Field or Bonders Field.
Didn't even play on that, just, yeah, and Bonders, just wherever they could find, and the kids were getting hurt, it was like falling on concrete, so this is a huge, but maybe we're to the point now where we've got to get more fields. But one of the things I just wanted to say too, since you brought up lights, when we talked about putting lights on the fields years ago, people in neighborhoods across the river were really opposed to that because the lights from sour soccer field, and Mr. Parrish will tell you this, we went through a lot of grief with residents up there with the lights on the softball and the soccer fields, so I don't know if adding more lights exacerbates that, or we just look at trying to find other locations for, for the fields, but I just wanted to say, thank you all for doing what you're doing, and it's a good thing to have a need for more recreational space. That's a surprise to us.
Good problem for the youth, you know, beating off the streets and that type of...
It was said beforehand that we were wasting our money on football fields because there weren't that many children playing, and now it's gone, that's a testament, but I know the Commission will, well, we're all, we're all pro-family and children here, so.
Well, we'll get with them and see what we can come up with, okay?
Will you keep us informed of those discussions as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
You all have cheerleaders.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you all so much.
Item 10.2, Consider Change Order Number 1 in the Amount of $160,000 with HD Maze Incorporated, Public Works Project for the Home Street Drainage and Sidewalk Project. The HD Maze research contract will increase by $160,000 from $249,000 to $409,000. Item 10.3...
Oh, I'm sorry, we've got to have a vote. Do we have a motion for approval, second by Commissioner Turner, and second by Commissioner Headen. Any more discussion, call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Headen?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so 10.2 is approved.
Item 10.3, To Consider Approval of Change Order 2 with ADE Contracting for the Home Street Corridor Sidewalk Project. The change order in the amount not to exceed $25,817 will increase the contract price from $119,109 to $144,926.
Motion by Commissioner May for approval, second. Okay. Mr. Wilder, second, and call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Headen?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, 10.3 is approved.
Item 10.4, The purpose of this item is to ratify purchase order for the Wilson Trail Project with CC Moore Incorporated. Construction has begun on the new 7,400-foot pedestrian bicycle trail. The trail will begin at Riverview Park and terminates near the intersection of Wilson Boulevard and Fair Oaks Lane. This will represent 20% of our match for the total grant.
Okay, a motion for approval. Commissioner Headen, you have second.
Second.
Mr. Turner, second, call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Headen?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, 10.4 is approved.
Item 10.5, Approving the Agreement Between the City of Frankfurt, Franklin County, and Seceda Regarding Repayment to the City for Payments Made to CAECO and Seceda's Behalf and Authorizing the Mayor to Sign All Related Documents. Only the promissory notes for the payment made in 2011 by the city and county will bear interest, and the applicable interest rate will be 1% per annum. The mayor will be authorized to sign all related documents. This obligation arose out of a lease agreement entered into and between CAECO and Franklin County on behalf of Seceda for improvements to the 55-acre Frankfurt, Franklin County Business Park located near Hanley Lane in Frankfurt. Lease agreement is to terminate on May 20, 2013, and payments of $111,000 and $113,000 are due in 2012, 2013 respectively.
Okay, a motion for approval from Commissioner Wilder, we got second.
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Turner, hold the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Headen?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so 10.5 is approved. Now I would like to entertain a motion for general.
I have some other business in there.
You've got other business? Okay, Mr. Wilder?
I'll try to breeze through this, although I'd also like to get back to the garbage fee for a second, but before getting into that, at our last, at our last meeting, our joint meeting with the city, the county, and the plant board, we were provided with a couple more resolutions, draft resolutions, and I believe the consensus at the time was to let staff between our three agencies kind of finesse the language before bringing it to a vote. Do we have a, hoping to at least get an update on, on that.
I think there've been discussions between Mr. Moore and Mr. Sparks...
And Mr. Price.
And Mr. Price.
Right. And we drafted a joint resolution. Mr. Price has discussed it preliminarily with some folks at the plant board, and Mr. Sparks was going to discuss it with the members of fiscal court at an upcoming meeting, so it's out there, and people are going to take a look at it and provide comments back.
Can we see it?
Sure. It was provided to, I think I've got a copy, you did not press.
I had a copy, I didn't know I was to distribute it.
Wow, Fred.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Just kidding.
I'll be glad to...
Put my copy and get it out in the morning.
We'll get that out tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
Draft.
Sorry, Mayor.
Draft, I'm sorry.
I was out of order. I'm really tempted to go ahead and ask to see it, but, could I, I'll go ahead and move on to the business, could I go ahead and see, and see it?
Do what?
I don't see a problem with that.
Without objection?
Do you have a copy?
I'm just curious to see if the substantive...
You're going to see it here?
Substantive changes on the...
You can put it there.
Other, other business I was going to bring up.
What do you got, Katie?
Well, the only other thing I was going to do is request that we go into closed session to discuss property acquisition, but before doing that, just to pick up a couple of things on the garbage fee, I don't know that we want to wait, I'm hesitant to wait two weeks to pick the discussion up again. If everything, we're going to go according to a clean schedule for January 1st, and I realize this probably isn't going to happen, but ideally, staff would have the full month of September to get input back on what size trash cans folks are looking for, and then have the three months to get them ordered and distributed. And we, the deeper we carry this discussion into September, the more we cut into that I think, and so my understanding is, we've already agreed to direct staff to prepare the budget amendment for our consideration. Boy, one, one catch I have, I have with all this, I could go ahead and sign off on this whole thing right now, but with a couple of caveats. So one thing I want to, I want to put on the table, and I know that I came up with the 0, 4, and 12 numbers in the first place, I think there was one factor that, that hasn't been taken fully into account, which are the additional, the additional upfront expenses this program will incur. I think, I think we all recognize that this results in cost savings in the long term for having to invest in cans and a new truck upfront. I don't want to, I'm hesitant to create too large a budget deficit right now. And in light of the fact that the revenue generated calculations haven't been projected to decrease, and I think we all expect they will decrease over time, I think it would, I'm just going to put this on the table, but it would probably be, I think it would be a little more fiscally responsible of us to, to look at numbers closer to 1, 5, and 13, but I just wanted to put that on the table, just to help mitigate some of that, some of that impact. That's one thought. In response to a concern that Commissioner May raised, and we've discussed this in a few work sessions now, but you raised a concern, Commissioner, about folks occasionally overflowing their estimated can sizes, and I think it's, I think it's safe to say that that will happen, that that's inevitable, that every now and then a birthday party, or Christmas, or house cleaning, or you never know what comes up, but some overflow is inevitable. And we've discussed not, not just selling the overflow bags, but also providing X free overflow bags per year, per household, and we never really set a, set an actual value to that X calculation. I mean, what do we think's reasonable? I think...
Well, I was kind of thinking, as I was tossing this in my head, was, you know, maybe 12 bags a year, you know, one bag a month that they could go over if they wanted to, or you could bank those up, so if you know, you think, man, you know, it's going to be a really good Christmas this year, you know? You might have a lot of stuff to get rid of at the end, you know, you have, you have, you know, four or five extra ones to... And it was also, one thing I might also point out, that it was discussed at the last work session, that we would also give maybe possibly grace periods, one week, a couple of one-week grace periods throughout the year, so those times where we, like at Christmas or at New Year's, where we know that there's going to be more trash, we don't want to put any more burden on the people of this community, so we want to do it in a fair way, and certainly a grace period of, you know, one week or two weeks out of the year would be ideal.
I could, I could get behind 12, 12 free bags a year. In regards to the, to the billing, in previous discussion, and if anybody's feelings have changed, please, please say so, but in previous discussion, I think we settled on the ideal method of billing being monthly, and it even said that ideally, it could be handled by the plant boards, because they already handle our only other monthly bill that we send out, AKA the sewer bill, and it just kind of makes sense to keep things consolidated in-house. My understanding is that they have, is that they initially expressed reservations, and my understanding also is that those reservations are tied to the fact that they get blamed for our bills. I know they're not... I know they're not particularly happy about sending out our sewer bill all the time.
Who would be?
They... The word on the street, and I don't know if this is how completely accurate this is, but I suspect there's at least some truth to it. The word on the street is that every time our sewer rates go up, they lose cable customers. Because folks see the sewer bill and the cable bill on the same bill, I... One thing I do know for certain is that they tend to... They field a lot of complaints over sewer bills that really should be directed to the city. That's all... I don't mean to get off on a tangent, but one alternative that's been suggested, and I know we brought this up in previous work sessions as well, is to actually separate our billing within the plant board, so that they send out a bill with essentially two pieces of paper. One piece of paper would have the plant board letterhead and the plant board bills on it. The other would have the city letterhead, our names on it, and the city bills on it, and that would kind of eliminate any confusion as to who's billing, who for what. And I guess I've been under the impression that the plant board was pretty amenable to that. Is that a... Is that formal? Do we have a formal responsible plant board on that?
You know, these talks are ongoing. We met several of our staff, which we call our billing committee, met with several of the plant board committee, and at that particular time, we were trying to come up... We were trying to develop a template that could be used both for sewage, garbage, and in the future for possible stormwater billing without a great deal of change or manipulation. And the... At that time, the staff of the plant board expressed that they would prefer us... They would prefer to get out of the billing for the city, that they would offer a great deal of assistance, and they would probably be willing to supplement costs at some level. But that they were so... They were pretty emphatic, and those of you who were at that meeting are bobbing your heads, so thank you for that support. So, after that time, we started looking into other options more seriously, and we have had a presentation by a company who said they do this type billing, and they do it in several states. And then we've also looked at the option of doing it in-house. At this time, it looks like probably our best option would be to outsource it through a company who does this professionally, and, you know, that way we would not incur a startup cost, and that's what they do, so they do it well. And, you know, so that's about all that I can report at this time. Mr. Scaff and I talked about it this morning, and, you know, it's about time we had another meeting with the plant board, but that's what I can report now.
And that includes the sewer bill as well, I assume?
Right.
Okay.
And I also would like to go back to the fact that if we put a fee on the small container, it should be enough to cover the cost of printing the bill and the administrative work. So, you have to think, well, you know, if we put a dollar or $2 on that small one, how does that relate to the actual administrative work that we have to do? Because I think one of the favorable reactions from not charging at all for the small container was the fact that a fairly large number of bills would be avoided.
And that's a valid point, too. Although if folks are paying a sewer bill, is there a significantly greater administrative cost to tack it on, an extra line onto an existing bill?
No, it didn't seem... No, the company that we had the... We heard the presentation from, they expressed that they had the capacity to develop a very complicated, complex bill.
So, if we're sending out the sewer bills by way of a third party, then it's safe to say that we're going to send out about 10,000 bills a month?
I think 13,000.
Or of course.
Didn't we say about 13,000 when we...
Closer to 14.
Closer to 14.
Well, yeah, and I...
Because sewer...
Because we send it outside the city as well.
Yes.
It's safe to say that we'll be sending about 10,000 bills out within the city?
Within the city, uh-huh. We have about 17% of our sewer customers live outside of the city.
I think there's some other things that maybe you look at as well. If you're talking about billing, the... And you want to decrease waste, we also need to think about increasing our website to pay online, and that would be one less bill that maybe we wouldn't have to pay out or put out. And there are other fees that happen with that, with the credit card companies. And the other thing I still think we need to think about with this program is, with the bulk pickup and yard waste removal, I strongly feel that we should limit that. I love the service. I love the service of our trash, and if this is something we go to, I really think that we should maybe try to limit that to the last week of every month. One, for apartments; two, to try to avoid as many people maybe trying to hide the trash or bulk it up on the neighbor's property, and that there may be some legal ideas or interpretations of, well, I put out 30 bags of trash this week because I have 10 kids in my house, and that's bulk pickup, which is now free. So, there's some other things that we should continue to look at.
That's fair. My understanding of bulk pickup is that refers specifically to items that are too large to fit into the cans, so things like stoves and couches and stuff. But, I mean, you're right, somebody could put it out of stove and pack it full of garbage.
Right.
Okay.
Hide it in a couch.
Another consideration that's come up is if people start using their recycle bin for overflow, then our recycle agent may have the option of refusing to do recycling for us because we're sending them more trash than recyclable materials. So, that's a concern of ours also.
I mean, I think there has to be a fine for that. Folks don't accidentally put garbage in their recycling bin. I mean, I think any fines should come with warnings, but...
Maybe your neighbor did it while you're sleeping.
Right. As far as bulk pickup, as far as the oversized items go, I would be happy to either limit that collection to once a month or to bill for it. I'd be happy with either one of those. I guess I'd still prefer to keep yard waste... To keep yard waste weekly. You can't... It's hard to hide, you know? You're not going to hide garbage in a pile of grass, per se. And the yard waste is pretty easy to tell what's what. But I would... Yeah, I'd be happy to either charge a fee for oversized items or limit their pickup to once a month. Although, some of that stuff is stuff that could be worked out. If... Let's say we were to pull the trigger right now and say, we want to do this, we want to charge this, this, and this for the different sized cans. That's everything that staff would need to get the, you know, the requests out and to start ordering the cans in. And this is a hypothetical, because I don't think we are approving this tonight. But let's say we were to do that, that would give us three or four months to then work out a lot of the details, like what we do with bulk pickup and the bags and the yard waste, et cetera. So, I'd say the pressing concern is... The pressing concern is simply the large question of whether or not we want to go in this direction, and the specific question of what the fee per container is. I think those are the things that staff need to move forward. Is there any feeling one way or the other in terms of the 0, 4, 12 as opposed to 1, 5, 14, or 1, 5, 13?
I'd prefer to keep it the 0 for the 35-gallon can, because I think that provides a real incentive to people to produce less waste.
Sure.
To say that, you know, it's free of charge. And so many people commented that they really appreciated that service when we had our trash forums, that we did provide a free-of-charge trash service. That would give us an opportunity to try to restore some of that for people who really focus on their waste and so forth. So, I... That's one of the things that I really like about that, was that option being free.
Each of those numbers amounts to $30,000, except for the... Assuming that we have 25%, 50%, 25% in terms of who orders how many cans, then a $1 equals $30,000, except for the middle number, in which case it equals 60. If we were to go 0, 5, 14, then half the folks would pay what they currently pay. Half the folks would get it... Or a quarter of the folks would get it free, and a quarter of the folks would pay more. And... But that would bring us a lot closer to being in line with... When it comes to the... Not just the trash program, but to the larger-scale budget.
We would close the gap somewhat, but we really wouldn't...
The gap would still be there, but it would...
Yeah, the gap would still be there.
We could put a dent in it. I'm concerned about that gap. I mean, and we've seen over the last few years that our revenue stream is consistently much larger than we anticipated, as in our budget is very conservative. We have a very conservative budget, which means that we estimate... We estimate our expenditure is high, and we estimate our revenue is low, to be safe on either end. And so, there's a fair amount of wiggle room in there, but I don't want to get too far out of balance. But those numbers are something that we will need to settle on before staff move forward. And I'm happy to go with the will of the commission, but I did want to put that on the table.
Yeah, and just to add that the numbers as... Which I thought we had agreed on last week, that would be the numbers. That was mine.
I know, I'm sorry to throw a wrench into the equation.
But right now, the solid waste collection fee that we have now, that pulls in roughly $600,000 a year, is that right? So, right now, we're going... I know to understand that we'll have an increased burden because of the cans, but we're also cutting long-term costs that way. But the annual projected would be $637,000 and $20. So, that is bringing in more revenue on that end than what we were bringing in before. And so, I mean, one of the things we factored in was the credit from the property tax. And so, we're still... We would be making, I would think, a dent in that regardless, even with the pricing structure we agreed as of last week.
And one thing that isn't factored into this are the bags, which will be an additional source of revenue as well. But also not factored into this are the cost of the new truck and compensating personnel.
We have to buy new trucks on a regular basis anyway.
Sure.
I mean, do we... Jeff, is... If we wanted to do this, and we said, okay, let's do it right away, would we absolutely have to have that new truck in order to make it happen? Or is that something that we could budget in future down the road?
The new truck, what I'm talking about would be an automated truck. It would replace... Where we could eventually go down five sanitation employees in year five. And so, in this current... The first year, we just kind of took a vehicle cost replacement and programmed that in year one, two, three, four, five, much like what we do with the cans. So, there's a line item for vehicles and a line item for cans in years one, two, three, four, five.
So, regardless of if you do a pay-as-you-drown system, do you feel like we would be putting that into the budget anyway to replace vehicles? Or is that something that is specifically due to a pay-as-you-drown system?
We need to put a line item in our budget going forward irregardless for vehicles.
Okay.
The big difference between what we're currently doing is buying a traditional garbage truck, which costs about $150,000 a year versus a fully automated garbage truck. It reduces staff from, you know, three to one, but the cost of the vehicle goes from $150 to almost $300,000. So, in year five, you would have less vehicles, probably three to four vehicles, not all automated, because a lot of our town isn't capable of sending that type of truck in there. But the idea would be that by changing out our fleet, lowering the number of trucks we send out, and lowering the number of staff through attrition over time, would decrease our operational costs.
Sure. And I guess the juxtaposition is, and I think you gave me the answer, that no, it's not necessary, but it would be a smart thing to do as we're going forward, to go ahead and try to look at that. So, for example, if the commission said, you know what, if we were to make this move, one of the things that we're kind of concerned about is we don't know exactly what the revenues would be, if we can project it, but we could wait a year to start doing that truck flip once we have a better handle on what those revenues are, and which would probably alleviate some of the concerns that we have with the expense of the sticker shock of buying a truck up immediately to get the program...
We have the fleet today to handle the cans if we buy the cans.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know you don't have hard numbers right now. Can you give us even a ballpark estimate of the proposed budget amendment that's on the slate, you know, for the next month?
I believe it was $200,000 for the cans.
Yeah.
And probably $200,000 for the equipment, and this is spread over a five-year period.
Yeah.
And then $100,000 for code enforcement personnel. So, approximately $500,000, just right off the top of my head.
How many person... Are we... Is that two employees? Is that a handful of part-time employees?
We had put in two full-time employees for code enforcement, and, you know, that's one of those cases where you might need that on the front end of the program, and it may not need it in year five, because, you know, you go through a big learning curve. And so, I guess it kind of depends on how we go into the code enforcement of... Upfront, there might be a lot of issues to deal with, and over time, people get educated and get more comfortable with the program, and that need goes away over time. I don't know.
I'm just... I'm bargain basement shopping right now. How realistic or practical would it be to approve this budget amendment with... Without a truck in the first year, without an automated truck in the first year, and with only one... With only one additional code enforcement? Is that... Is that cutting... I mean, is that close to the line? Is that over the line?
When I say code enforcement, we were looking at adding some staff in sanitation.
Yeah.
To do the code enforcement internally.
Okay.
One probably discussion that hasn't occurred is with code enforcement that is within planning and zoning, what their workload is currently, to whether that would be something we could work together.
Right.
We just looked at it from an internal standpoint at this point.
My preference would be to approve one additional employee right now, and to approve another if it proves necessary.
That's my preference. That's my preference.
And do you think we can wait on the truck a year? First truck a year?
When we say a year, that would be probably next July.
Or happy year, really, yeah.
Then, you know, I think at that point, it's, with the cans out on the street.
Sure.
At that point, that's when we would budget for a fully automated truck, given that, you know, that's going to be with only six months. We've got a fleet that'll service the cans as, but I guess that would be the hope to get that in next.
So does that mean that we can cut this budget amendment in half? Down to 250 for cans and an employee?
I think that's what we're talking about for January 1 or February 1, whatever that date lies, and then.
And so really, that would be 225, because that employee would only get paid for half of the year. Right? That's correct. I can live with that.
Yeah. Do you all need any more information from us at this point?
I think they want as much as they can get from us, so they can, so they can move. I'm happy to give them as much as they're looking for, but if other folks want to wait a couple of weeks, I certainly understand.
Commissioner May.
Uh, Mayor, thank you. One thing I just want to caution is the reason I'm always saying I certainly respect everybody's desire to do, do a new program, and appreciate that. But the thing I think we have to realize is, the numbers that we're looking at are all based on assumptions. They're not really based on any prior history in the garbage collection. We don't know if 25%, right now, this is based on 25% of the 10,600 and something households choosing the 35 gallon container, and 50% of those households, which would be 5,300 households choosing the 65 gallon container, and then the other 25% taking the 95 container. And I certainly appreciate the predicament that public work staff is in, not being able to really have a crystal ball to see how many people are actually going to take certain containers. There's just, I think, there's so many assumptions built into this that that's why I'm reluctant to, to support this program fully at this point. Not saying again, you know, like, it may be after a year, think people say, man, this is the best thing city's ever done, and that, that's fine. But I don't want them to come back and say this is the worst or a bad thing either. So that, that's why I'm, I just wanted to point out to everyone that these numbers are not real numbers. I certainly don't mean that disparagingly to the staff, because they can only work with what, what they have available to them. But if these assumptions are totally off, it could be really not good, and end up costing way more. And I know, how much does it cost, if I may ask, to retrofit the trucks that we have now? Because I know those trucks we've been buying for the last six years have been capable of being fitted with the lift on them. How much would it cost to transition one of those trucks over to a fully automated truck?
They're not able to be converted over to a fully auto, they're, what they're called, partially or semi-automated, meaning they have the rear tipper on the back.
So it's just got the tipper, but not, okay.
The fully automated is an arm, it's a totally different setup on the trucks.
I was, I was, well, I was going to even try to make a case for the, to even say we just retrofitted it, but, okay, well, takes that off the table. But thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone about the numbers. I think, I mean, Commissioner May makes a, makes a very valid point, although I, my sense is that these, these numbers are actually estimated pretty conservatively. I paid a lot of attention to the amount of trash that folks set out over the past, the past year or two. And I'd say the vast majority of people set out two or three or more regular-sized trash cans. And if we, if we're underestimating, then that means, then that's, that's good, that's good news for us, fiscally. The only, the only part we get, we only get in trouble if everybody goes for the 35-gallon cans. That's, that's not going to happen. I'm pretty confident. I say if anything, we're underestimating, but I, I'm comfortable enough with, with the estimates. And we'll have, you know, it's like, it's like anything. Get the ball rolling and make adjustments if need be. Oh, one other note I was going to make. I'm going to leave, I'm leaving tonight, actually, for a waste conference down in Nashville, and I'll be gone for the week down there. And I'm going to be looking into things like waste energy and more information on pay through. If anybody has any, any questions, or things they'd like me to look into down there, don't hesitate to let me know. One, one thing that I'm going to be looking into, though, is the possibility of grants. At a, at a waste conference I went to a couple of years ago, somebody who administers state grants confirmed that, that he thought there might be a very real possibility of getting recycling grants for pay-as-you-throw, to help with pay-as-you-throw programs. So that's another potential source of funding. It makes sense if you think about it. But I'll, I'll look into that one down in Nashville. So what do you need from us now? You got, so you've got authorization to put together a budget amendment?
That's correct.
And it's going to be in the 225, 250 range?
And as I understand the budget amendment.
Yeah.
In a, in a, what we were talking for, equipment, garbage cans, those type of, like, over a five-year lease.
Yeah.
I think they're kind of a year-to-year contract.
Yeah.
Because we're a government entity.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't do the whole contract with, if we bought garbage cans, it may be for a million dollars for the total cost over five years. But because we're a government agency, they would, it'd be kind of a year-to-year contract, because they can't commit funding from another commissioner or commission.
Sure.
In the future, as I understand it. So this budget amendment would be just for this first
Sure.
Year of the can cost and, and one personnel. And we would revisit it July 1st, revisit this issue July 1st.
Are folks comfortable for now, sticking with, or just periods, sticking with the 0412 numbers? If we want to make any adjustments? Okay. Great. Maybe that's all we needed to figure out today. I'm happy to go ahead and give staff the, the authority to, to start working on these cart request forms. I'm happy to do that now or later if people want to wait, but. Mayor, just said, the staff is just asking us to review the form just to see if there's any other changes, but I would, I would say, I don't mind looking at the form, but I think it's better if the city manager and staff sort of work that out with, certainly no problem with commissioners input, giving input, but I'm happy to go with whatever the city manager and the staff work out. But yeah, I mean, feel free to. One request I would have with the form, actually.
Take my name off.
Is that we, is that we strike or amend the, the last line that says there will be a no additional monthly charge for curbside recycling, bulk pickup, or yard waste removal? I agree that there won't be any monthly charge for the recycling or the yard waste. Do we, do we want to discuss whether or not we want to charge for oversized items like stoves and couches, or whether or not we do want to pick that up for free?
I still like the idea that it's free.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Wilder is making some statements now that, that he cannot speak for the entire commission, so we've got to get three people going along with him.
Agreed.
So, so when he states this, I'd like for, to get some acknowledgement, if you're agreeing with what he's saying. So that, rather than just, you know, having staff to do something without having, of course, no. So, Commissioner May.
Mayor, I was just saying, too, I'm for leaving the pickup of the white goods, the appliances and furniture at, at no additional cost. Just want to point out that anything that we provide to the citizens really isn't free because it's all coming through tax dollars.
Sure.
Always just say that to people. Everything that city government does is not, is not free. But we do provide good values for what they get, I think. Because we can, I mean, because we can discuss limitations on that, on that service outside the context of this request form. So if we don't have a, a majority interested in charging for that service, which it appears we don't, then, because I see, Mayor, that you don't want to charge for it.
That's right.
Sure.
Y'all know where I stand.
Then, then under that circumstance, then I don't have any, I guess, then I don't have any qualms with the cart request form as it stands.
Commissioner.
With the form, I may ask that you try to add a little bit more for property address? What if someone owns, they may own multiple properties? Apartment complexes? I don't know.
They would receive multiple forms. This would go out per the PVA.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Now, we currently bill property owners for the garbage service.
Okay.
And so, that list that generates the garbage bill today would be the same list we would use to send out this notice. So that would go to the property owners.
So someone could receive 18 of these? 36 of these in their mailbox?
If they own 36 properties.
Right.
They would, they would receive 36 requests for each property they own.
What if they only send one back? Are you going to take that as a silent understanding, that that's what they want for all their properties?
We would.
Or would you try to get in touch with the?
We would not. We would go by the address they fill out, and that's what the order we would place.
Okay.
If they didn't respond, then they would get the default 65-gallon cart for recycling and for garbage.
Okay.
And in all fairness, if somebody has 20 properties and gets 20 request forms, ideally, they would, they would pass the forms along to the actual tenants who are producing the garbage and let them make that decision. But that's, that's really between them and their tenants.
Ideally.
Yeah. And, oh, yeah, in an ideal world, lots of things would be different. We work with what we've got.
One more item of business that we probably need to iron out is amending our current ordinances to make it a more of a pay-as-you-throw ordinance. And specifically where there's a fine involved, if there's a inspection, currently they go through, there's a process we go through under our current ordinance, and we might want to look at amending that ordinance to make it maybe to a five-day period, or throw out some different things of how to police or enforce the ordinances as a pay-as-you-throw format. So that's maybe something for the September agenda, or September work session that we'll go through. We've prepared some ordinance revisions to kind of mirror a pay-as-you-throw program, so maybe go through those and discuss those items as well.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Before I, before I request that we go into closed session to discuss property, the, I never got the, the draft of the green vision resolution, but the only thing I wanted to say about it, and this was said at the, this was said last week, but regarding the two at-large appointees that are referenced in here, okay, so the resolution says that the, says that a board would be established, it would include nine voting members, one from the city of Frankfurt, one from the plant board, one from Franklin County Fiscal Court, Kentucky State University, Franklin County Agricultural Extension Office, the new sustainability coordinator, and two at-large appointees. I think that list, it left off state government. And as far as the two at-large appointees go, I think it'd really make a lot of sense for those to be the county schools and city schools, as opposed to at-large.
I would agree with Commissioner Wilder on that there's, we should include the school districts and the state on this, when looking at that ordinance.
What, what process is going to be used? We've got three different entities who have a methodology of submitting a resolution. What process are we going to use if they have a little different wording, or a little different language, or appointing authority?
Appointing authority? I'm afraid I don't understand the question.
For example, if you outlined what would be an ideal group, but what if another entity outlined a different group of people?
I think that's something.
Are we the couple of variations?
My, my two cents is that's just something that would need to be hashed out, I guess. The, the concept of including the state and two, and the two school districts was mentioned at the green vision meeting. So it's, it's on the table, and I suspect, although I certainly can't speak for anybody else, but I suspect that there probably will be consensus around that. But if not, that's just something I guess we'd need to come back to us for.
Would Mr. Rumpke come back and sort of referee that and tell, you know, just some slight things that need to be brought in line so that we all had the same resolution?
I don't know if that'd be necessary or not. If, if, I don't have a problem with that if, if you and representatives from the other agency feel that's, feel that would be necessary. I don't, I don't know that the resolution needs, frankly, I don't think the resolutions need to be worded identically, per se, as long as they agree to the same, the same essential things. So for example, the makeup of the, of the board, that's something we all need to agree on. But in terms of semantics throughout the rest of the document, I don't know that that even really matters.
Will you be getting together with the other ones? You and Mr. Moore?
We, we wait for their feedback. You know, they have a different sequence of meetings than we do. And I know sometimes you, you all might get a little impatient, but we can't speak for them, and they have their governing bodies, and
Right.
So we have to, everybody has to wait, and then, you know, then we talk, and.
Commissioner, Commissioner May.
I was going to say, there's, there's some, I think, some guidelines on doing joint resolutions that you might find, but also, I know in the statutes and the solicitors probably familiar with this, sometimes on appointing multi-county or multi-jurisdictional planning agencies or different boards, there's some, there's some statutory provisions that can sort of be used as a model on that.
Thank you, we'll look at that.
About to belabor it, but. Assuming that everybody's, you know, waiting for responses from everyone else, I guess, could you go ahead and share, go ahead and share our response with the, with the other parties?
Certainly.
And draft it, draft.
Sure. And, and for what it's worth, is something to be aware of, if, if we replaced the two at-large appointees with members from the two school, school, school districts, then this actually isn't, there actually wouldn't be any joint appointments, per se. I mean, right? I mean, presumably every entity would just appoint their own representative, but we wouldn't have to get three of us agreeing on any particular appointment, like in an at-large situation.
Well, the, the way it's drafted right now is you have one member from the city of Frankfurt, the plant board, Franklin County, Kentucky State, the Franklin County Agriculture Extension Agent, the Franklin County School System, Frankfurt Independent School System, the Sustainability Coordinator, and then one at-large appointee approved by the city of Frankfurt, Frankfurt Plant Board, and Franklin County. So that was the, that was the
Yeah, I know, there's, there wouldn't be an at-large appointee. The, we're talking about nine folks. The state has been left out of this list, and we're talking about replacing the two at-large appointees with the two school districts.
Well, we have both school districts involved here, and I don't know that the agricultural extension agent would fill the position of the state role, but in any event, when I discuss the comments with the plant board, I'll mention that you all want to have a specific state employee represent the state.
Mayor.
What if we just designated by the, either the governor or by the secretary of finance who oversees the energy programs for Kentucky? Because when we had the task force when I was mayor, we had an appointee from, from the finance cabinet, Paul Kaplan. Or anything like that, doesn't matter, I mean, just. And before he retired recently, Paul Kaplan was actually involved in the green, was actually attending the green vision meeting, and the, the state has been at the table, and it's been, they've been representing themselves by way of the finance. Just throw that out there, that's a good suggestion. Okay. I don't have the appropriate KRS in front of me.
61810.
61811.
It's B?
61811B.
8101B.
I'd like to request that we go into closed session for two, to KRS 61811B to discuss property.
Do you have a second? You have a second? Commissioner May, hold on.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Uh, yes, we, uh.